Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, March 24th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Sarah Pelk. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill Number 229. Resolution providing that the city of Pittsburgh enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with service providers for professional services in connection with the 2020 City Cut's lawn care program, cost not to exceed $300,000. Bill Number 230. Resolution granting unto Western Pennsylvania Conservancy their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new rain garden lot which trench drains on the inlet and outlet sides of the garden located at the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and Frankstown Avenue in the 12th Ward, 9th Council District. Bill Number 231. Resolution granting unto Daisy Wilson Artist Community their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new set of stairs and stoop to the front of the existing building at 1727 Bedford Avenue in the 3rd Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 232. Resolution granting unto MMEJM Properties LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new round sign on an existing elevator shaft at 2401 Smallman Street, 2nd Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 233. Resolution granting unto Chase Bank their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an awning to be placed above the ATM machine at 1030 Fifth Avenue, 1st Ward, 6th Council District. Councilman Bruce Kraus presents Bill Number 234. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with Flexible LLC for professional onsite childcare services for some not to exceed $131,625 over three years. Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill Number 235. Resolution amending Resolution 840 of 2019, effective December 23rd, 2019, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Various Lawn Items Funded by the Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, and Home Investment Partnerships Program." Bill Number 236. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Ewalt House located at 186 Home Street in the Lawrenceville neighborhood in the 9th Ward. Bill Number 237. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Maury Addison House located at 5134 Carnegie Street in the Lawrenceville neighborhood in the 10th Ward, city of Pittsburgh. That concludes the reading of the legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, March 24th. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Here. Mr. Coghill? Here. Ms. Gross?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Lavelle?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Ms. Strasburger?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Nine members present.
Will those in the room, thank you ma'am clerk, will those in the room please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence? And those at home, please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey. Our next order of business is proclamations, and there are no proclamations during this time. We'll reevaluate that as we go along here, but we're trying to keep the amount of people around one another as low as possible. And then we have, Council Chambers is still in lockdown and we continue to encourage members of the community, this is in regards to public comment, we encourage the members of the community to email your comments to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. That's C-I-T-Y, Clerk, C-L-E-R-K-S, Office, O-F-F-I-C-E, at Pittsburgh, spelled out, PA.gov. And all the comments will be forwarded to council members and you can always individually email your council members as well, or any council member, but if you want all of council to see it, we encourage you to use the Clerk's, the email address that we just provided. And now we'll move on to the next order of business, which will be the presentation of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers.
Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 229. Resolution providing that the city enter into a professional services agreement with service providers for professional services in connection with the 2020 City Cut's lawn care program and providing for payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $300,000. Bill Number 230. Resolution granting unto Western Pennsylvania Conservancy their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new rain garden with drenched trails on the inlet and outlet sides of the garden located at the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and Frankstown Avenue in the 12th Ward, 9th Council District. Bill Number 231. Resolution granting unto Daisy Wilson Artist Community their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new rain garden with drenched trails on the inlet and outlet sides of the garden located at the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and Frankstown Avenue in the 12th Ward, 9th Council District. Bill Number 231. Resolution granting unto Daisy Wilson Artist Community their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new set of stairs and stoop to the front of the existing building at 1727 Bedford Avenue in the 3rd Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 232. Resolution granting unto MMEJM Properties LLC their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new round sign on an existing elevator shaft, 2401 Smallman Street, 2nd Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 233. Resolution granting unto Chase Bank their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an awning to be placed above the ATM machine at 1030 Fifth Avenue in the 1st Ward, 6th Council District.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 234. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with Flexible LLC for professional onsite childcare services for a sum not to exceed $131,625 over three years for the payment of the cost thereof.
Thank you, Councilman. You have a way of weight on Bill 234?
I do, Madam President. I do, Madam President. Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to weigh the rules so that this bill may appear on our following Standing Committee agenda.
Thank you, Councilman. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor? The bill will actually appear today, immediately following this meeting, at our Standing Committee meetings with Councilman Lavelle will be chairing. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 235. Resolution amending Resolution Number 840, entitled, "Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 CDBG Grant Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Various Lawn Items Funded by the CDBG Emergency Solutions Grant, Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS, and Home Investment Partnerships Program." Bill Number 236. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Elk House located at 186 Home Street in the Lawrenceville neighborhood, 9th Ward. Bill Number 237. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Maury Addison House located at 5134 Carnegie Street in the Lawrenceville neighborhood, 10th Ward.
Thank you, ma'am clerk, and myself. Councilwoman Kelsmith, Chair of Hearings, I have no new papers. We have any unfinished business before council? Hearing, none. The reports of committee for final action. Well now move on to Councilman Daniel Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 224. Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for March 18th, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 202. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 797 as amended by Resolution 876 of 2019 in order to correct the account numbers for the URA's microfinance program.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works. Councilman Coghill?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes?
I have the next, I have the next final papers for consideration under Committee on Human Resources.
Okay, you have it after Councilman Coghill on my agenda.
Yeah. Oh, you're right. You're absolutely right.
Okay.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 225. Report of the Committee on Public Works for March 18th, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 157. Resolution amending Resolution Number 830, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement to complete engineering design for a new multi-modular connection of Hazelwood, Greenfield, and Four Mile Run with Oakland to provide for a specific payee and authorize an increase to the project cost to afford for additional design services within the scope of work not to exceed a total cost of $1,635,681.50, an increase of $289,037.40. Bill Number 190. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to provide funding for the West Penn Playground Reconstruction Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $75,000 with a local match of $75,000 to come out of the 2020 operating budget in the form of in-kind work. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $150,000. Bill Number 191. Resolution granting unto Big River Development LP their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new projecting sign at 2305 Smallman Street in the 2nd Ward, 7th Council District.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills, or is there any discussion on the bills? Is there any discussion? Seeing none-
Hey, let me just say this, Teresa. I know with Cory, 157, that was in his district, and I'm assuming that's all good. Yeah, good.
Okay.
Good deal. Yeah, we figured it out. We worked it out, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we worked it out, and there will be a bill we sent over to Domi and the administration, I believe, yesterday, and we'll introduce a new bill next week to talk about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you both.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Madam President, this is Deb Gross.
Yes.
I also had some questions initially about this bill, but I got some more background information, so I'm supportive today.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you for letting us know. Okay, no further discussion? The bills are not ready for final action? Will the clerk, those opposed, wait, those in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Now we'll move on to, thank you, ma'am clerk, Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 226. Report of the Committee on Human Resources for March 18th, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 194. Resolution amending Resolution Number 56, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with the United Way of Southwestern Pennsylvania for services relating to the Career Transition Project 2, providing for the payment by increasing the authorized amount by $120,000 and by extending the term two years.
Thank you. You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing-
Just one thing on 194.
Okay.
Is that, like, is that job training? And I don't want to have to get a director on the phone for it. It's just a, I thought maybe one of you all would know.
Councilman Kraus?
I'm sorry, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus, do you now?
I'm sorry, Councilman. I'm sorry. Can you repeat that, Councilman? No, I was just asking about 194, the Career Transition Project. Okay. What is that, like, job training? Or what exactly is that? Do you know? It is, it is to cover the cost of such, yes. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, the bill is not ready for final action. Those in favor will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Well, the next, Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Councilwoman?
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 227. Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for March 18th, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 196. Resolution amending Resolution 613, authorizing the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Core Business Technologies for software equipment and services related to the installation of payment processing and cashiering system for the Department of Finance to include an additional option year and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $390,552.17 for years 2015, 16, 17, and 2020. Bill Number 197. Resolution providing that the city enter into a professional services agreement with Questica for professional services. This is a contract renewal via sole source for annual subscription fees related to the budgeting and performance management system, cost not to exceed $412,500 over five years.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing no discussion, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And then we'll move on to our last committee for the day. Councilwoman Deb Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 228. Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for March 18th, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 19. Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the District 15 Beta Development at 1465 Smallman Street. Bill Number 193. Resolution amending Resolution Number 106, which provided for the execution of a corporation agreement with the URA for the administration of certain projects and program by including an additional economic development and housing microfinance program. Line item for an amount not to exceed $250,000, and the total cost thereof by the same amount not to exceed $3,590,320, Council District, all.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. Those in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Now the next, Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Councilwoman?
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 227. Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for March 18th, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 196. Resolution amending Resolution 613, authorizing the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Core Business Technologies for software equipment and services related to the installation of payment processing and cashiering system for the Department of Finance to include an additional option year and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $390,552.17 for years 2015, 16, 17, and 2020. Bill Number 197. Resolution providing that the city enter into a professional services agreement with Questica for professional services. This is a contract renewal via sole source for annual subscription fees related to the budgeting and performance management system, cost not to exceed $412,500 over five years.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing no discussion, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And then we'll move on to our last committee for the day. Councilwoman Deb Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 228. Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for March 18th, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 19. Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the District 15 Beta Development at 1465 Smallman Street. Bill Number 193. Resolution amending Resolution Number 106, which provided for the execution of a corporation agreement with the URA for the administration of certain projects and program by including an additional economic development and housing microfinance program. Line item for an amount not to exceed $250,000, and the total cost thereof by the same amount not to exceed $3,590,320, Council District, all.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. Those in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Now the next, Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Councilwoman?
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 227. Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for March 18th, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 196. Resolution amending Resolution 613, authorizing the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Core Business Technologies for software equipment and services related to the installation of payment processing and cashiering system for the Department of Finance to include an additional option year and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $390,552.17 for years 2015, 16, 17, and 2020. Bill Number 197. Resolution providing that the city enter into a professional services agreement with Questica for professional services. This is a contract renewal via sole source for annual subscription fees related to the budgeting and performance management system, cost not to exceed $412,500 over five years.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing no discussion, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Yeah, you can call us back and, uh, just.
Could you just stay on the line?
Agenda's done, okay. Yeah, if you stay on the line, we're ready to go.
Stay on there, I'll just stay on.
We'll just take a few minutes, we'll just pause in between just to change over for the recording, and we're gonna go right into the next meeting, so if you would just hang on.
And for the public watching at home, could you both introduce yourselves so they know who we're in the room with?
Brenda Prey, City Clerk.
Kim Clark Baskin, Assistant City Clerk.
And we also have our Sergeant at Arms here, who's always here, John, faithfully, and other people recording the meetings. So I do want to say that I appreciate that you brought up the concerns about our public safety, or about our employees, Councilmen, and their safety, Councilman O'Connor, but I do want to say, I think that, like, when there are other departments, and I'm sure there are other departments we need to look into, but if people have to be there, as long as we're making sure people are spaced safely apart, like we're telling the public to do, and if we can put up Plexiglas, like you just saw Giant Eagle do, and markings where people should be, I think those things in the interim, if we can't get to the place where we're taking calls from home, I think we have to make sure while they're here, we're doing the best we can to make sure all of our employees are safe, regardless of what job you're doing, that everybody is, is safe. I mean, it's, it's a very stressful time of a lot of uncertainty. I think if, encouraging the public to stay at home, and, you know, we, we are all staying home as much as we can. I'm physically here because I have to sign papers after the meeting, and the clerks are here because they have to make sure that we're, we're staying in line and doing the things that we're all doing. But I do want to say that we go, I go right home after this and I stay home, but, you know, the sooner we listen to all the warnings and the more we stay home, the sooner we'll get out of this and the sooner we'll be able to see our families. I miss my family, I even miss all my colleagues, I miss being here, I miss seeing the people that I see all the time. So I just want to say, we all want to get to a place where we're back to normal, but we'll get there by being a little bit cautious in the interim, so, and making sure we're adhering to the rules and staying home and as much as possible. So with that said, can I have a motion to approve the minutes and to adjourn the meeting?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.
Hello, and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Tuesday, March 24, 2020. My name is Kim Clark Baskin, and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, Sarah Pelk. The following is a list of legislation to be preliminarily voted upon by Pittsburgh City Council. Finance and Law Committee, Mr. Lavelle is the Chair, we have Bill Number 213. Ordinance Amending the City Code, Title I, Administrative, Article VII, Procedures, Chapter 161, Contracts, in order to increase the council manic amount from $3,000 to $5,000. This bill is sponsored by Councilmember Daniel Lavelle. Bill Number 216, Resolution Providing for the Sell of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales, Items A and B, 11 and 13 DIC. Bill Number 217, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjoning Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, Items A through K, 1210 West Moreland, 7301 Monticello, 228 Kramer, 2922 Banksville, 1005 Morrison, 1701 Brighton, 1705 Brighton, Zero Marquise, 1519 and 1529 Brighton, and 69 Watson. Public Works Committee, Mr. Coghill is the Chair, we have Bill Number 214. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title VII, Business Licensing, Chapter 719, Vendors and Peddlers, by amending the existing language of Section 719.10 by adding sites approved by the Sidewalk and Vending Committees to the list of sites approved by council. Bill Number 215, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Office of Management and Budget to Renew the Non-Exclusive License Agreement with the Federal General Services Administration for the Veterans Affairs Highland Drive Campus at 7180 Highland Drive, for limited use and to conduct due diligence pursuant to the application approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Justice to acquire the property for law enforcement and emergency management services. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wilson is the Chair, we have Bill Number 218. Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title 10, Building, Chapter 1004, International Property Maintenance Code Adoption by Adopting the 2015 Edition of the International Property Maintenance Code and with the amendments thereto specified in Section 1004.02 of the City Code, as well as making certain amendments to the existing language of Section 1004.02 of the City Code. Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair, we have Bill Number 109. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Town Homes on Fifth Avenue Project Located on Tax Map in the Office of Allegheny County, Pittsburgh, 15232. That concludes the reading of the legislation up for preliminary vote. Thank you and have a great day.
Good morning and welcome to today's Standing Committee Meeting for Tuesday, March 24. Our first order of business is always public comment. I will simply remind the public that if they want to make comment, they can email us at With that, we will now move into our Standing Committee Agenda. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, Chair.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. Our first, uh, our first committee for the day is Finance and Law Committee, chaired by myself. First bill is 213.
Bill 213, Ordinance Amending the City Code at Title I, Administrative, Article VII, Procedures, Chapter 161, Contracts, in order to increase the council manic amount from $3,000 to $5,000.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second, Councilwoman.
Second.
This bill is to bring us in compliance with the other bill that we passed last week. Is there any discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes. Bill 216.
Bill 216, Resolution Providing for the Sell of Certain Property Acquired by the City at Tax Sale Items A and B, 11 and 13 DIC.
Please have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Need a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 217.
Bill 217, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjoning Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, Item A through K, 1210 West Moreland, 7301 Monticello, 228 Kramer, 2922 Banksville, 1005 Morrison, 1701 and 1705 Brighton, Zero Marquise, 1519 Brighton, and 1529 Brighton, and 69 Watson.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve? Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 217 is recommended. That takes us to the invoices. May I please have a motion for the invoices?
Motion to approve? Second.
Any discussion on the invoices? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. We do not have interdepartment transfers, we do have P-cards for approval. I need a motion for the P-cards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P-cards are approved. That takes us to the Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. New paper, Bill 214.
Bill 214, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title VII, Business License in Chapter 719, Vendors and Peddlers, by amending the existing language of Section 719.10 and add sites approved by the Sidewalk and Vending Committee to the list of sites approved by council.
Have a motion, Mr. Coghill?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 215.
Bill 215, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Office of Management and Budget to Renew the Non-Exclusive License Agreement with the Federal General Services Administration for the Veterans Affairs Highland Drive Campus for limited use and to conduct due diligence pursuant to the application approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Justice to acquire the property for law enforcement and emergency management purposes.
Motion?
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman Coghill?
No, I just wanted to open up to the floor. I'll just make my comments. I think this is gonna be a really state-of-the-art, you know, facility when it's done. However, Mr. Stella came up with a couple of suggestions, like, how long is it gonna take and how many millions of dollars are we gonna spend there? I'd like to get those answers eventually, but I'm fine with approving this for today.
And for those who don't know, can I say, Councilman, that the person you're referring to is somebody who's an assistant in our Budget Office, Deputy Director, I think is what it is, and I think that he's not a council member, but he did give us some, some of his concerns.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, this is Deb Gross. I will also point out that many cities are struggling to find additional hospital beds in areas where COVID-19 patients can be treated, and we are on the verge of acquiring a hospital. So, I mean, I've never toured the facility, I know other members have, but isn't it an equipped former medical facility for the Veterans Affairs?
Yes.
Correct.
Is that, that's kind of an open question, but again, if this is a, if we're getting close to full deed transfer, the city still does not have the deed, and the federal government does still have the deed and is in the, in the last stages of disposition of transferring the ownership from the federal government to our city government, that this is a really good timing. Hopefully Pittsburgh never gets to the point that other cities are getting to. I listened to a very long public address from the Governor of New York State, and they were setting up multiple FEMA and PMA mobile hospitals across the state in order to accommodate additional patients, so I would assume that this is a potential site if the City of Pittsburgh gets to that point. I guess that's the end of my comments, not really a question, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll simply add, I have actually toured the facility, it's not in good condition. My suspicion, I don't know this to be any sort of fact, is that we'd probably be in a better situation taking over a hotel or something of that nature to set up as a temporary hospital than this, because it would probably require a lot of, a lot of dollars to just get it sanitized and prepared. But towards Councilman Coghill's questions, as well as that one, I would ask that we ask the Director before Tuesday to just be able to answer those questions of, what is the anticipated dollar amount that we're spending on this, how long, and do they have any sense of whether or not this could be turned into a temporary hospital site? Councilwoman Smith, second round?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Just, just a question, I'm curious, what's the status of the Mercy Hospital? Are they continuing with that now? Because I know that there's a hole in construction, but is that one that's permitted still? Because I wonder if that could be used, if we could get that, if they can get that up and running and done, if that could be used in the interim while we need it.
We should, we should ask our public safety directors, I'm honestly not sure.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Any further discussion on 215? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to the Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. New paper, Bill 234.
Bill 234, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Human Resources and Civil Service to Enter into an Agreement with Flexible LLC for Professional On-Site Childcare Services for a Sum Not to Exceed $131,625 over three years and for the payment of the cost thereof.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? I'm sorry, Councilman Kraus?
One question. Sorry, and I might just email the Director. Sorry, Councilman Kraus.
O'Connor, I'm sorry.
So this is the, this is a reimbursement for a couple of weeks ago, or is this is like a three-year plan with them? Is this extending the contract?
So forgive me, my latest agenda does not have my bill listed on it, but I do believe it's a three-year plan.
Okay, all right, I'll ask the Director, I just, I, because I know we had set something up, you know, the first week of this at City Council, or at the Council Building, and I thought it was a reimbursement, but it is a three-year plan, I'll look into it, but thank you.
Yes, it is, it is not a reimbursement, it is a continuation for providing childcare services for a number of different outlets.
Okay.
Thank you.
There is a possibility that the Director is on the line. Director, you on the line by any chance? Okay.
It's fine, I'll shoot an email just to get some clarification, because I wasn't sure whether that was just the reimbursement from a couple of weeks ago or the new contract, it was just, I was going back and forth with it. So I'll just send her an email, no worries.
In the legislation language, it says it's 20 through 22, so the next three years.
Yeah, and I thought we had to reimburse them for the services that they gave us the one week as well, so that's where I was just a little.
Can I say, I think you're right, Councilman, I think it's a combination, I think that there was, I'm sorry, Councilman, is that okay?
Councilman, go.
I just think that there was a reimbursement for paying people to work during this coronavirus that didn't have childcare and to help with, help their families, so I think you're right about part of that, but I think that.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if it was looped into one thing, that's.
So I think you may have heard it somewhere, because I did too.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other dis, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? All, bill is approved, excuse me. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. New bill, 218.
Bill 218, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. Bill 218, ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title 10, Building Chapter 1004, International Property Maintenance Code adoption by adopting the 2015 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code and with the amendments thereto specified in Section 1004.02 of the city code, as well as making certain amendments to the existing language of Section 1004.02 of the city code.
Okay, motion?
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman?
Yeah, this is, so there's a couple of things here. The one is that the bill is to to actually update our codes with the actual IPMC code that the inspectors are trained on, tested on, that they are able to use the code that they're trained and tested on to update to the 2015. There are a couple amendments that have been made, or that are proposed, and if we could call the, she may be on the line, Director Kinter? Is that possible to...
You want to call the director?
Call in?
Do we want the director to call in? Okay.
Councilman, while we try to figure out how to contact the director, do you want to make a motion to amend the bill?
Yeah, so, well, motion to amend the bill and for discussion. I'll explain the amendments.
Need a second on the amendment?
Second on the motion to amend.
All those in favor of amending the bill?
Aye.
I am.
Any abstentions? The bill is...
Okay, she's on the line. She's on the line.
The, so the bill is amended. Director, do you want to speak to this?
Hi, Director. Thanks for being here. This is Bobby.
Hey, Councilmen. So, the two amendments that I just was made aware of right now are, one is in regards to pests, and the other is in regards to sign maintenance certifications. The purpose of this bill is an update from the 2003 to the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code. Thanks for those who attended the briefing regarding this. And I really want to focus on the additions of those codes. Those are to assist the department in right sizing older codes. The two amendments, the one regarding the sign maintenance certification, I do have concerns regarding enforcement of that. And I think that it requires its own review and bill specific to sign maintenance certification. In regards to pests, that has been traditionally removed from our section of the code since the adoption of the IPMC in 2003. PLI does do garbage and weeds and debris violation inspections, and those often help to remedy issues with pests. But pest control and those types of measures are under the jurisdiction of Allegheny County Health Department. So, in the same way, in the IPMC, we do not do plumbing and other things that are under jurisdictions of other agencies. That would be the same for pests, which is why it's been traditionally removed. And I would say that we should continue that practice.
Thank you. Yes, my concern for that was that, you know, as we move forward and as the possibility of rental registration comes forward, that we have the ability to, whenever we're in the property, to actually cite for, you know, multiple things, whether it's there's not a screen, there's not a railing. The inspectors also have the ability, when they're onsite, to make that inspection with pests if necessary.
Understood. I think, you know, it's a really good point regarding rental registration. We will be enforcing provisions of the International Property Code as part of rental registration. But again, I would like to make sure that there's a clear line of separation when it comes to enforcement, regarding enforcement that really crosses over to other jurisdictions. I do think that for rental registration or, you know, property maintenance in general, that the weeds and debris have been updated in such a way to assist us for those types of violations and to make sure that the fallout of that, which is often pests, are taken care of as part of our property maintenance code.
But do we have the ability, if we leave the language in there, if we leave that amendment, if we leave this amendment, do we have the ability to cite, just like Allegheny County would be called to cite?
Are you asking whether or not we have the legal authority regarding that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'd be able to answer that question without a law department review. I think it's, again, been traditionally removed because it is under the jurisdiction of Allegheny County and the way, in the same way, we would not be able to enforce the plumbing code. But plumbing code's a little bit different as far as jurisdiction. So, I don't have a good answer for that, but again, I think it's addressed in other ways through garbage, weeds and debris. And that Allegheny County is really the proper office for that type of enforcement.
Okay. I appreciate your concern, but is this an issue for, would this be an issue for an inspector when they're onsite and there is an issue with rental property? You know, maybe a family's gone through something, it's, you know, the, we have the ability to do that immediately instead of having to, you know, wait for the county health department?
Well, I think immediately we would say weeds and debris, right? So, you know, rats aren't existing in a vacuum. There are conditions that are making it so that they do exist. And that's what we'd be citing for immediately onsite.
Oh, okay. So, you would, even in the apartment, you could cite for garbage and debris within the rental property, like in, say, an apartment building?
Right.
Okay. All right. And then the other one was the sign amendment, which allows for the ability of, if anyone who has a sign, who has been paying on the sign certificate, maintenance, the maintenance certificate, then if they've been doing it for 10 years, then it gives them the ability to, to not have to be dinged for not having or having a misplaced occupancy permit for the, occupancy certificate for the sign, which I know has caused some issues in the past. And we're just trying to remedy that so that people, you know, since it may be, you know, they had to have it initially when they got it and they've been paying it for 10 years, it seems likely that, you know, it would be, if there was a modification and we're going out annually and checking that sign, that we would be aware of any sort of modification on that sign, and then we could address that at that time.
So, not necessarily. Prior to the licensing rules and regulations that were adopted in 2018, the department was sending out invoices and getting payments and not doing as many proactive inspections on signs. So, our ability to see how a sign has changed over time is incredibly limited. So, I wouldn't trust that data prior to that 2017, 2018 adoption. In addition, it brings up enforcement issues for the department. So, a sign, of course, requires zoning review and it requires permitting approval. For zoning, it's looking at the brightness of the sign and other aspects. And for permitting, to make sure that it's erected appropriately, it's fixed appropriately, and it's not going to harm anyone. So, those are the types of things that we're looking at for our checklist now when it comes to signs. If we allow some sort of grandfathering or amnesty, we really don't have good information to know whether or not a sign has been changed over a period of time. And just paying that license fee isn't good enough a mark for us to know and have that information. Obviously, we don't want to be punitive, but I think there are other administrative ways where we can ease the burden regarding getting the certificate of occupancies so that we're appropriately making sure that signs have been approved by zoning and by permitting. And I don't think that this is necessarily the way to go when it comes to that type of enforcement because it does lead to, I think, more enforcement issues on PLI's end.
Well, I apologize. I wasn't more notice on these amendments. I, too, got confused. I thought the meeting would be, I thought we had another day for the meeting. And I realize the times of what we're all going through, probably this isn't... Highest priority, since it is important to implement our code of 2015 so that, you know, the inspectors have the ability to cite what they've been trained on. But I do still have concerns that, I am, I would like to see these be added. I mean, I realize there is concerns. I hope that we can, you know, work through that. I think that, you know, that the garbage and debris doesn't really have the ability to cite in the apartment appropriately, but I do hear your concerns though. Does other councilmembers have any? Again, sorry.
Mr. Chair, this is Deb Gross. I also have comments.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman, are you done, Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
All right, Councilwoman Gross, then. Councilwoman Smith, Councilwoman Gross?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So, I concur with Councilman Wilson, and I'd be happy to work with you, Councilman Wilson, to take a further look at the section about pests. I hear what the director is saying, that there is the currently, and historically, we've removed that section from our code, and I would use the word deferred to county health. It is different than the plumbing code, as the director pointed out. And I think if we work on it, we can dig a little deeper. I would, for members and for the public, remind you that there are places where we've left our city code blank, that the county health is the enforcement agency only because we've left our code blank. I've had multiple experiences with people wanting to do stormwater mitigation. I think some other members probably have as well, rain gardens or rain barrels. And then they call your office and they say, "I called for a permit, but permit licenses and inspection wouldn't give me a permit, and asked me, told me to call county health. And then I called county health, and county health would not give me a permit." Because they don't want to. They just don't, even though the city of Pittsburgh code is blank, and so it defers to the higher level of government, our Allegheny County Health Department, in reality, does not want to do that work. And other municipalities in the county have added a section about how do you get a permit and an inspection so you don't flood your next door neighbor when you're, you know, retaining stormwater onsite, or you're doing a green roof, or you're doing a rain barrel or something. And I know, I think our South Hill councilmembers will remember this. And we've just basically left people in a void. And so, they get bounced around and there aren't, they just are not permitted in inspections, whereas other municipalities like Mount Lebanon crashed years ago now. And at their city level, they add a capacity and expertise, and they have inspections and permits for those kinds of constructions. I would say, for us, right now, I've had repeated complaints about pests in my district. I don't know for a fact that Allegheny County Health Department is bouncing people around, but if you're telling me that there's basically a blank spot in our code, I'm now thinking maybe that's part of the problem. And that the site's capacity to cite garbage or, you know, whatever you call it, overgrowth, is not adequate. I think I heard the director say, "Oh, in most cases, that will take care of the pests." And I think I have some constituent cases that prove that statement wrong. And I'd be willing to dig into it a little more and see if we can't clarify. And if we need to add capacity because we have pest complaints that are not being met by the Allegheny County Health Department, I'm happy to spend some energy figuring that out, looking into it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. So, there's a lot to be said in a lot of this different stuff. I just want to say thank you to Councilman Wilson for bringing some of this forward because it is important. And, you know, I'd like to co-sponsor with you as well, or I'd like to serve as a sponsor with you, if you don't mind, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, it'd be fine.
Okay, thank you. And so, I just want to talk a little bit about it because I think that there's a lot of issues here. This sign issue has been an issue for a very long time. We have no, PLI doesn't have records. They don't have records of our current, of occupancy permits now. And so, if you don't have those, I don't know how you can prove that the sign was ever modified or that we can prove that they didn't have a permit at some point in time. I mean, the records just aren't there. And so, I think that if somebody fought this, I mean, they may actually win. And so, I don't know that, that the solution is just allowing people to continue to issue citations for the signs. And we've had people that have had signs for a very long time, and I get that there was at some point concerns whether a sign would fall. But you could do a visual to see whether a sign is in poor shape or poor condition. And maybe that's, we ought to talk about the inspectors and what they need to know and look for. But I don't think constantly citing people for this signage has been a solution. We have so many bigger issues in this city, other than a sign that might fall on somebody. I mean, it's unbelievable that we've spent this much time on enforcing sign codes. And when we talk about the garbage and the trash and all those other things, I think that, you know, I've said this before in our meetings with the land bank and with the Housing Opportunity Fund, we have so many resources. I think a lot of this goes back to making sure that officers are checking the code for disruptive properties because then you're not having the same property over and over and over again, getting the same citations and seeing no results. If we actually have people issuing, there's three strikes, and then you have to go through this process, the disruptive properties. So, it's a combination of enforcing the disruptive properties and making sure on all levels they're enforcing the disruptive properties. I think that it's making sure we're working with our magistrates on enforcement on their level, that you get, maybe give a continuance and a chance for somebody. But then I think that's when we send somebody, if you have somebody who can't afford to put a fence up or somebody who can't afford to get certain things done to make sure that they're up to code, then that's when we send them to the Housing Opportunity Fund and to others in the city for different assistance programs. Because I don't want to see what we've become is we're so focused on the enforcement, but we don't realize that there might be an 80-year-old person who just doesn't have the money to spend on medication, let alone a fence or something that we want them to put, to install, or a hand railing or something. So, I think overall, it's putting all the services together that needs to happen in the city of Pittsburgh and making sure we have this combined team is what we need to go over some of these things. And I know that's easier said than done, especially now and during this time of crisis. But I think putting that team together where people are going through the properties that are repeatedly, you know, and found in violation, and what the cause might be, and where we are sending them for help, I think coming up with that team to work on that is so important. So, I hope that we do that eventually. But I'm glad to see this legislation come forward. And I want to thank you, Councilman, because it's really important to the city.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Yes?
I have one more thing to say.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Say it again, Councilman?
Okay. Director Kinter, I just want to say how awesome it is to have you here, to be the director. And I really appreciate you stepping up and doing that. I just want to say that we're really lucky to have you. And, you know, I'd like to continue to work with you on this. I like to keep it as is and move forward. I think that there is some general concerns, I mean, about, you know, what's been addressed here. And I think this gives us an opportunity to actually, to correct some things, but then also to give an opportunity to some of the most vulnerable, especially in my district, who reach out on some of these concerns. And I just want to make sure that, on our end, we have the ability to actually step in and do something that's necessary. So, I appreciate all that you're doing.
Well, thank you. And I think, you know, we share your concerns. We want to be good partners, and we want to assist people into meeting the goals and... partners, and we want to assist people into meeting the goals and not being just punitive. But I think there are other ways that we can approach the sign and the pest issue, and I think we should have sort of a larger conversation about that. Of course, we are very interested and very, it's very necessary for us to update our basic international property maintenance code from 2003 to the 2015.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amended bill, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our last committee of the day, which is Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Gross, Bill 109.
Bill 109, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Town Homes on Fifth Avenue Project Located at 5127, 5129, 5131, 5133, and 5135 Fifth Avenue.
Councilwoman, motion?
Two weeks.
You said two weeks?
Yes, two weeks, please.
Okay. All those in favor of a hold for two weeks?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held two weeks.
I'm just curious, where is this, on Fifth Avenue?
It's, it's Shady, Councilwoman, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, Councilwoman Smith is asking where this is at. I'm pretty sure this is in the Shady Side area.
It's the Councilwoman Strasburger's district at the end of Wilkins Avenue.
Okay. Thank you.
That takes us to the end of our agenda. We do not have any meeting announcements. I will let the public know, however, our next meeting for our regular meeting will be on Tuesday, the 31st. Our standing committee meetings similar to today will be immediately thereafter, also on Tuesday, 31st. And if the public wants to send comment, they can do so by emailing cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov, and I would also simply remind the public, please stay at home. Is there any other comments from council members? Councilwoman Smith?
I just want to thank you and our public safety folks and the mayor's office, and everybody that's been our DPW, our clerk's office, everybody that's just IMP, you never, I mean, IMP has really played a critical role in a lot of what's happening. The 3-1-1 workers, just everybody in the city has really pulled together. I just want to thank all of them and say to please be safe, and for their sake, I hope everybody, and for all of our sakes, I hope everybody stays home.
Thank you.
Tell me what it is.
This is Councilwoman Strasburger.
Councilwoman Strasburger?
Could you announce that? Could the man or clerk announce that, look what who's here videotaping?
Sure, hold on, Councilwoman.
So we have Mike Giles here with Tri-State Video, and he's been assisting us with this conference call and getting us all cleared up, so the echo and the things that you heard last week are kind of cleared up this week. So he's working in the corner with us. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Did I hear Councilwoman Strasburger?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to provide an additional update to Councilman O'Connor's question from the last meeting an hour ago. So it looks like the city is working at a pretty, as fast as possible, pretty unprecedented pace, actually, to get a solution for the 3-1-1 and service desk workers. So it looks like by the end of the week, 3-1-1 will be able to work remotely. It's a similar solution and kind of issue that other cities like LA, Philadelphia, Miami, Kansas City, and Reno are all going through at the same time as us. So we're not alone in this struggle. In the interim, there have been a couple of procedures put in place. One is working at reduced staff, so there's reduced density in the office, so that all workers can be at least six feet apart from one another, and then those who are working remotely are answering questions, 3-1-1 questions that come in on social media and on email and that sort of thing, so they're able to work remotely that way. But hoping for everyone working from home, starting at the end of this week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any other comments from members?
Mr. Chair, this is Deb Gross again. I just want to acknowledge, again, the volunteers on the ground who are doing such tremendous work to make sure that people at home are getting the supplies that they need. I have mutual aid organizations that have kind of stepped into a vacuum, while our existing nonprofits had a certain amount of capacity and reach. I've got groups off the ground in Highland Park, especially, a big shout out to the group in Bloomfield, Bloomfield Mutual Aid, who kind of mobilized on their own as a not-structured nonprofit, just through volunteers and are extremely well organized and drop flyers off at neighbors' houses across the district or across the neighborhood, and have been doing their own food bank to people who don't have access to food or aren't able to get out of the house. And so I just want to say, it's been wonderful working with them over the last week, they even outgrew their own kind of apartment living rooms where they had been organizing supplies, and I connected them with Bantha Tea, which is a small cafe on Penn Avenue and the edge of Bloomfield, it's offering their kind of supply room and cool storage so that they can keep supplies like gallons of milk cold and still have a kind of organized, disinfected, and supply, kind of, again, food bank with drop-off, and there are people who are volunteering, delivery drivers. And I know that, as I mentioned last week, these groups are, are letting the United Way of Southwestern Pennsylvania know about these capacities that are new volunteer groups so that they can relay them to callers who need help, and the United Way has been tremendously helpful and is coordinating with the Allegheny County Health Department as well to help people kind of connect with therapy or mental health services over the phone, and to remember that you can call 211, you can also email or go to the website at 211.org, and that they are, we continue to have conversations with them about how to connect needs to resources. So just a thank you to the United Way of Southwestern Pennsylvania also. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add one more thing to that? I just want to make sure that people at home know that also that the Pittsburgh Public Schools said that they're not going back until April 14th, and that we do know, as Councilwoman Gross mentioned, that there's a lot of services available, and members can, people in the community can still contact their council members, and they can contact, as Councilwoman Gross mentioned, 211, but there's a lot of resources out there and a lot of things on social media, and hopefully we'll get somebody who can help navigate all that, because I think that's the, I really think we need a resource person who can help people through some of this, a resource department, and I would like to see 3-1-1 maybe trained in that, or have some social workers or something added to the, to that department, something to help people when they call in, because it is so overwhelming, the help that is available out there, but if you don't know how to navigate it, you'll never access it. So I think that's really important, having either some social workers or somebody who's trained really well in that area.
So tours that in.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
This is Councilwoman Strasburger again. I've been in touch with, I know that Councilman Gross has been, you know, really championing 211, and I've been in touch with those I know at United Way who are in fact being brought off of other projects to be trained as 211 answering service people. So they're actually bringing people all together off of their own little projects with United Way and answering phone calls, and so I would just say that we should be directing people to 211 as much as possible. They now have an official coordination with the Allegheny County Health Department, so they're getting the most up-to-date info, so whether you have questions about procedures and what's safe and what's not, and what social distancing means, to your, you know, you're experiencing homelessness and you need shelter right now, or you are a small business, or you just have any possible, you're having a mental health emergency, if it's an emergency, you should call 911, but if you have, you know, any question at all, that's not a city service-related question. We really want to be sending people to 211, because they are keeping track of all the different services that are out there and can point you in the right direction.
Yeah, and can I just say, I agree with that, Councilwoman, but I also think that there's people, I agree with that, but I also think, and I always use 211 frequently, I mean, I give it to people all the time, even before this crisis, but that's somewhere I've always directed people. But I think right now, people are so stressed that, I think, sending them to another number or another place, if we can do what we can to help connect people, we should be trying to do all we can. A lot of times, people don't register the programs with 211, and so that would be the other thing, I would encourage people, if you have it, have a program, you have a feeding program, you have some service that you're offering to the public, that you register that with 211, so that they have a complete list of services available.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I'll simply add to your point, Councilwoman, of the schools being delayed two more weeks. In my house, we've effectively just agreed that schools will never open back up this year. I mean, school is essentially done, and I think we just have to, as a city, prepare for that reality and begin thinking through, how do we slowly, if and when, six to eight weeks from now, we begin to return to normalcy and begin to open things back up, how do we deal with all the parents and all the workers in our city who are forced to also still have to deal with children who are at home and not in school? And we'll probably have, need to elevate our daycare needs here within the city to provide those resources for the city, which will also be the additional cost that is going to come to the city, but we just need to be proactive, because it's my personal belief that school is done for the year.
So I will say, it's also my personal belief that it's done, but I, since I'm not on the school board, I'm not going to speak for them, but I will say that I think that it really showed the difference and the disparity between some of the wealthier districts who are already back, who are already doing things and making sure that their children are learning. When you see in our district, even though we pay more per child, our students don't always have computer access, and they don't have access and they don't have computers. And so I think it really speaks volumes about where we need to be as a city, and I think that that should be a priority, making sure every child in the city of Pittsburgh receives a laptop with the funding that we're already paying for our schools, and that the tech companies open up the free, you know, access to our children, as Comcast has been doing a lot of things in that area. I think it'd be great if everybody opened, Verizon, others did, whatever they could to make sure that our people have access, but I think it really showed a lot of the disparity and...
You're absolutely right. I mean, the wealthier districts, they just went to online learning, but unfortunately, that's not a reality. I reached out to a teacher friend of mine and actually got an online program that they put me in touch with, so we started our children on online programming yesterday to take them through an actual academic teaching, but for many of our students, that's not, for many of our children, that's not a reality.
Yeah, I understand how you're saying that. We're missing half of what you're saying.
I apologize. Councilwoman Smith was talking about the wealthier districts went to online learning, and unfortunately, for so many in our city, that's not a reality that we can do, and I was mentioning that I reached out to a teacher that I knew, and they recommended a program for me to go online, set up, that will walk my children through sort of an academic year of teaching online, but that, to follow up with her point, we should try to get online resources to all our children, even if, once we can, opening back up our rec centers, providing the resource there, but we just need to look at everything we can, because so many of our children will absolutely fall tremendously behind over the course of the next few months.
Thank you so much. This is Deb Gross again, of course, I concur. Thank you all for your comments.
Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. We are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone, be safe.